Thank you all for joining us today. We especially want to thank our guests, James and all of those and Patricia from JG Consulting. So, thank you for joining us this afternoon. Good to see everybody. So as we do with every board meeting, I will go through our board norms and protocols before we get started. So as a board, we agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. So with that, again, welcome to all of our board members, our guests, Mr. Hoda, Ms. Smith, and Ms. Warren, and to all those that are watching out in the community. We're glad to have you with us on this beautiful afternoon. So Ms. Smith, would you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
And Dr. Yeager.
Dr. Yeager, present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve today's special agenda.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Go ahead and do a roll call vote, Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
I'm sorry, I went out. Janie Humphries?
Yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
And Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Yeager?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And hello, Mr. Goheen. Good to see you. All right. Well, before I kick it off to Mr. Guerra and his team, board, you should have received an email from me that had today's proposed agenda and some survey questions that we will probably get through with some of that. It just tentative agenda, but I know James and his team are excited to meet with us. You know, I'm excited to work with you all and so I'm going to go ahead and kick it off to James. Again, thank you, Mr. Guerra and your team for working with us and we're excited to kick this process going and you know, get to where we need to be. So I'll kick it off to you, James, and you take over.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Board President Lopez. Good to see all your faces again virtually. First, confidence. So from, from, on behalf of the entire JG Consulting team, just want to thank you for selecting us to serve you in this capacity. We understand how critically important this role is and as we stated during our meeting a couple of weeks ago, we won't let you down in this endeavor. So as the owner and the founder of the firm, thank you on behalf of the team. We're thrilled to be working with you. So we're excited to have this preliminary discussion, get to know you a little bit better, discuss the major milestones that we have before us. And if you don't mind, please feel free to call me James. I appreciate the courtesy of Mr. Guerra, but that honor still is bestowed upon my old man, my father Joe. So I go by James. So if you don't mind, feel free to call me James. Dr. Linados is joining me. Mr. Fraley, Alton Fraley will be joining us momentarily. He's texting us as we speak. So excuse his tardiness, but he'll be on with us briefly. So as Mr. Lopez stated, we have shared an agenda. It's just a preliminary agenda for us to walk through some of the milestones that we'll discuss today, just to keep us on task and time oriented because we want to be mindful of your time that's spent with us this afternoon. In addition to that, there are some preliminary survey draft questions, but by no means do we have to utilize any of those questions. The intention was just to spur some thought as we start to develop the survey for community outreach, just to give you a sense of some of the items that we've used in the past. So if we can, if I could get just like a virtual thumbs up that everybody has a copy of the agenda, and if not, I can share my screen if given the access, but otherwise I'll minimize here and I'll walk through it. Oh, you do not have a copy, Dr. Nguyen?
I wasn't able to access the district email system.
Okay. Let me do this. I will, I have control to share my screen, so bear with me one moment. All right. So I'm going to minimize this and move some of the controls around. So let's, you should see our letterhead now, JG Consulting, Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools Agenda for today. There's five key priority items that we'd like to discuss. The first one being communication protocols and expectations. Does everyone see this clearly?
Yes.
Okay. Terrific. So at a high level, what we consider communication protocols and expectations is the regular flow of communication. So as we mentioned a couple of weeks ago, we're accessible to you as a board as often as needed throughout the workday and the weekends. And what I mean by that is by email, phone calls, we understand that there are some statutes in the opinion of your attorney general that certain communications need to be directed through the board officers and your general counsel. So our commitment to you as a board, by every Friday, to provide you with a formal report, an update, if you will, of where we are in the stages of the search process. But prior to any Friday, should you have any questions or need anything from us or just want a generic update, we can assure you that we'll provide all of you with that communication. So for example, if I speak with one of you, let's say on a Tuesday, by phone or email communication and the remainder of the board is not included, what we will do and commit to is provide a quick follow-up email to the board officers and copy your counsel to distribute what was discussed either by phone or email. So that way, everybody has the same communication. We want to ensure that everybody is seeing from the same sheet of music. So no one is going to be withheld with any of the information as we approach each major milestone. So that's one communication protocol. The other that we'd like to discuss is any sort of inquiry or phone call, email request, open records request, whatever the case may be. If you'd like to designate a point person on the board, which is generally your board president, to serve as the first point of contact and if Board President Lopez, if so chooses that it's appropriate for us to spawn, for example, to any media inquiries or press inquiries, I'm generally the first line of defense and I'll work with my team to communicate the appropriate message. So it's important for us as a team, as we're working collectively together, to also, in the same spirit of seeing in from the same sheet of music, having a consistent message. And so whatever that message is defined as, or messages are defined collectively, we want to make sure that we're utilizing the same messaging, both internally with your staff, your students, and externally with your constituents and other stakeholders who are interested in this process. And one other thing that we could suggest, considering, it's not uncommon to create a superintendent's search page on the district's website. So in addition to the survey, which will have an active link on the district's homepage or any superintendent's search page created, we can have a rolling activity calendar of where we are with the milestones as we progress through each stage of the executive search process. That way, we're adhering to our promise and commitment to you and the community that we're, one, inclusive in our process, transparent, and we're communicating at a very high level. So that way, anyone who inquires with you, if they can't reach you, for example, during the workday, you happen to be busy on the weekends, there's a quick one-stop shop, which could serve its purpose through the district's webpage if we create. Suggestions, by no means are remarried to any of those suggestions, but I'll pause there and maybe entertain any questions you have about communication and just the expectations.
Sure. And I'll just share, and I apologize, James. I should have, I think I had mentioned to you, I was going to connect you with our Executive Director of Communications, Mr. Edwin Birch, who does all of the district's communications. So I'll make sure, and for board members, I did share with James that, you know, I think it would help all of us in terms of, I think, to your point about consistency, you know, to connect you with Mr. Birch so that we, whether it's the website or what we're communicating as a district on our social media, that there's consistency there and that we're all on the same page in terms of who's answering questions or media inquiries and things of that nature. So I'll make sure to connect you with Mr. Birch after this meeting.
Perfect. Yeah, that would be terrific. Thank you. So that's helpful. Any other questions with regard to communication or just the protocols? It's very simplistic. You know, we don't overcomplicate it, but what I often say publicly and internally within our team norms and values is that we like to over-communicate. So that way, at the end of the day, should anyone question where we are in the process, there will be no miscommunication, no gaps or shortage of communication because we, again, we want this to be an inclusive, transparent, and very collaborative process, not only with you as the elected members of the community and of the district, but for your constituents and ultimately the students that you serve. So that's why the communication is so critical. We put that as priority number one. Second, second on the agenda is the individual board member interviews. If you recall, during our interview, the first true meeting that we'll have with each other independently is setting aside some time. We'll create a calendar or schedule according to your availability. Perhaps after the week of Thanksgiving or a week that we designate, we can self-select as a board, perhaps two consecutive days or three consecutive days. You give us a range of maybe two to three dates that work best for you. We'll create a calendar or a schedule of an hour time slot for each of you to choose from throughout the day. So let's just say hypothetically, we start at 8:00 AM and we go all the way through 6:00 PM on a Monday, maybe December 3rd or whatever that first Monday is. You can, we'll send the calendar. We'll work with your board clerk. You can choose what time works best for you and we'll plan accordingly. We can do this in a similar format to our discussion this afternoon via Zoom. We could do a teleconference if it makes more sense to you, but we'll work around your schedules. So the three of us will be dedicated to listening and learning from you. And the spirit of that conversation, if you recall, is really just to understand better what you're looking for in the next district leader. For example, what are you looking for in the attributes, characteristics, and traits of the next superintendent? Who are some of those stakeholders that you'd like for us to meet with internally and externally? What are some of the celebrations of the district? So those are some sample questions. We have a series of 10 questions. We're going to take notes, ask you clarifying questions, but that board member interview is important for us because that really sets the tone for our first major milestone as we begin the community outreach. So that's item two. Any questions about that? Any date? Would be helpful if we had access to generic calendars today just for planning sake, but if we don't have dates in mind, we can certainly follow up on that later. I know the holidays are quickly approaching and so I, you know, I don't want to assume that next week would work considering it's Thanksgiving break, but if the following week would work well, you know, we could set these board member interviews. Yes, ma'am?
Are you going to send the questions to us before we have the interview so that way we'll know what they are? Or will we just be presented those when we meet with you?
Either way, we can certainly send them. They're, you know, I promise they're not hot seat type questions or very, they're very basic, tense, 10 questions, but if you would like to see them in advance to organize your thoughts, by all means, we can share those so that way you can plan.
Whichever way you choose to do it, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. I think, I think it's fair, you know, if we're planning to do this virtually, it gives you time to prep and to prepare. So let's, I'll commit to sending those in advance so that way you can see the 10 questions and you can help organize your thoughts a little bit better so that way we can stay on task and oriented with our time. Because I know.
That's fine. Thank you.
Zoom, teague, and busy, and probably a little bit tired of all the Zoom meetings. So we want to be conscientious of that, too. Thank you for the question. So are there any dates that work well or do not work well for anyone? You know, again, we don't have to commit to anything, but it will help us plan ahead if you have an idea of what potential dates would work best. We'll create a calendar.
I'm flexible, so whatever.
Okay.
I'll go with it.
And James, I'm sorry, you cut out a little bit there. So this is, this is a date. You're looking for a follow-up date with the entire board to, or with individual board members?
It's individuals. So what we'll do is create our time slots throughout the course of two or three consecutive days. So, you know, hypothetically, we could begin as early as 8:00 AM and have a full day of our time slots through 6:00 PM if it's, if it's best for the board. And we can do that over two days, three days. Typically, we, we set aside two consecutive days just to give everybody an opportunity to pick and choose what options work best, a time slot that works best with their schedules. And we, you know, that's, that's an important meeting, so I definitely want to dedicate the time and allot that time to fit your schedules. So if, for whatever reason, those designated dates don't work, we'll work around that and provide other options.
You know, James, if we could maybe even just think, would we like to do it next week? Or we would like to do it the week after Thanksgiving? If we can at least even get that general sense of which week would work best for everybody, then we can work around their schedules.
The next week is fine for me. This is Janie. December 2nd, 3rd, and 4th is Kansas State School Board Convention, which is virtual. So it might be more problematic for those of us that are going to be zooming into that. But I'm pretty flexible, otherwise with my time.
Janie, one question. Did you say it was December 2nd, 3rd, and 4th?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So we know that we can keep from using those three dates.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have a preference as to, maybe we do it that December 3rd, I mean, November 30th and December 1st, or would you like to do it next week? Either one works for us.
Next week is fine by me.
Okay.
Next week's fine by me as well.
Yes. A shorter week, so I'll have less things scheduled.
I can do it the 30th after 12, and then after that, any day.
Next, this is about being a win. Next week, Wednesday or Friday, and then the 30th after 12. My class is in at 12 and the first is open.
Okay. And this is Yolanda. Next week is fine with me as well because it sounds like you have different options on times. So we will give you the time slot that works for us. And if that is the case, then next week is fine for me as well.
Okay. All right. And I'm sorry, I had this, all right. So I had Yolanda next week, and next week we had the 30th after 12. But next week, if you can just tell me who might be available around then?
If I can make, if I could simplify this a bit. So let's aim for Wednesday, the 25th as one option, and then we'll give two full days of, so three full days of options. Wednesday, the 25th, and then Monday, the 30th, all day, any timeframe we'll work with. And then December 1st, that's a Tuesday. Does that work?
I can't do the 25th, but I can.
That's, yeah, that's okay. So we'll give three dates and you just pick any time slot from those three dates and we'll fit, we'll work it in.
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that 30th after 12, any of those dates. Perfect.
All right. So that simplifies it. All right. Great. So I'll follow up with the formal calendar. I'll share it again, just to follow protocols. As I alluded to earlier, the calendar will go to your board council, to your board officers, and then they'll distribute it to everyone else. And then just let us know. And then what will happen as a confirmation, I will be responsible for sending a formal calendar invite. Just let us know. I'll give you the option whether you want a conference call or you want a Zoom. And so if you prefer virtual, we can do that. If not, we have a conference call bridge we can use as well. So make it very easy, easy for you. And once you confirm your time, you'll receive a formal calendar hold in your inbox. So awesome. All right. That was easy. Community outreach, we somewhat touched on this. So the outreach will begin once we identify not only the survey questions that we'll discuss here momentarily, but also who some of those stakeholders will be, those groups or, and/or individuals. So we discussed a lot of what some of the common best practices are. So just to spur some thought, you know, we don't have to get into the specifics right now, but in the past, you know, we've worked with your local elected officials such as your mayor, council members, your faith-based leaders, clergy men and women, university officials, student-based groups, PTAs. So everyone and anyone who is interested and would be willing to share their voice and their input is on the table.
James, you keep freezing.
And/or in person. Okay. It's my internet connectivity. Go ahead, Pat.
That's okay. No, no, no. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't just me that you were cutting me out or something.
I apologize. I'm in the country right now, so I'm in my family's hometown, so our internet is intermittent. But as I was saying, the community outreach will begin once we've identified who internally and externally we will work with based on your recommendation and your request. So no one and anyone is off the table for us to meet with. We can do as many things as you want us to do over the course of the dedicated timeframe, whether it's two weeks, three weeks, a month, we'll accommodate, similar to what we were doing with you, working around everybody's schedules. We're going to set a clear timeframe, timetable when we'll meet with the various groups. And so we'll, we'll take the burden of scheduling all of that with your assistance with specific contact information. So what we'll ask of you, if you have a specific individual or a group, it would be helpful if we have their email and their phone number. So as you start to think about the groups that we're working with, helping us with the generic contact information will help us with our outreach. Otherwise, we'll have to do a lot of homework and research to track, track some of these groups and individuals down. And I apologize for cutting out. Like I said, I'm somewhat out in the country today, so my.
And I do believe that it was, maybe Maxine had asked a question about maybe getting the questions beforehand. Just be advised that one of those questions that we ask in the individual board interview is who do you feel we should meet with? So getting them a little early is probably a good thing. It'll get you thinking about who should we have them talk to? And it'll give you time to be able to garner some of those ideas as to not only who, but how's the best way for us to contact them? So getting those questions in advance will be helpful.
So James and Patricia, I wonder, and maybe you were going to, you know, share this, but I wonder if it might be helpful, or if you all have a list of potential like folks that you all typically would connect with, but then if, maybe as board members, if we, if we send you names of people or groups individually, are you going to provide like a comprehensive list of, hey, board, this is who you all have said we should meet with so that we can all see and, you know, then, all right, who's missing, who's not on, at the table and things of that nature? So everyone has, again, working from the same list.
That's exactly right. And that's probably where I lost connection. So some of the things that I was saying prior to losing connection is that some of the common best practices for us is we generally will meet with like your mayor, for example, city council members, faith-based groups, clergy.
And I'll continue since he cut out again. We also make sure we meet internally with the teachers and the students, your staff, your executive staff, central office. And those are more of the internal. Okay, James, you're back on.
Sorry. It's one of those days. So yes, so we will create a comprehensive list that again will be public-facing and for transparency's sake. So that comprehensive list will be a working, organic document that will update regularly because you may think of somebody that perhaps wasn't at the top of mind and we can add later. So we will, we won't deny an opportunity to visit with anyone. So we'll keep that, that window of opportunity open indefinitely until you tell us it's, it's okay for us to focus on other key priorities of the search. Does that make sense? Sorry if I keep cutting it out.
Great. Now, yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. So we'll identify and, you know, as you think about some of, some of the groups, if you could help us come prepared with some of the contact information. And we'll work with your board clerk and your communications department to identify contact information if you do not have that set of information. I think they, they most likely will keep that information in-house. And so we'll rely on them, but as far as the scheduling, well, again, we'll take that, that heavy lift off of your shoulders and off of your staff's shoulders and take ownership of that. So that way, the community also become familiarized with who we are and become comfortable working with us. Because a lot of this work, as we all know, is engendered in trust. So we want them to trust us and to feel comfortable working with our team. All right. So the fourth item, other major milestones and timeline goals. So we've identified the 25th, the 30th, and the first for our individual meetings with all of you. So thank you for sharing those dates. What other dates would you like to plan for now? To have a revisit or perhaps a recap on the summary overview of what we've heard from the different stakeholders, both internally and externally? That meeting generally consists of us presenting a synopsis, a summary report of everything that we've heard, including the data review, disaggregating the survey data, and presenting that to you in a format that again will become public-facing. But what that report does, that helps us develop and draft a leadership profile. And leadership profile for us, we define that as the job description. That's what will be used as our North Star to recruit. And so that's a big meeting for us.
The question I have is, are we going to allow, what, one to two weeks for community input? What is the typical one that we would go ahead and allow that? So that when we can get it together, so that we can share it with them, we need a little bit of time to make sure that we reach all of the community input.
Yeah. So again, to, generally, it's a two-full-week process, including weekends where we engage with community. And I'm assuming, unless you tell us otherwise, most of these meetings will be held virtually. So we can manage virtual meetings simultaneously, the three of us, and technically four of us, to manage these meetings. And so if you recall, most recently, when we conducted the Austin Independent School District Search, we met with more than 200 groups, all via Zoom, virtually teleconferencing, and our team worked together throughout the course of each day over the course of those weeks to meet with as many people as possible. So we were able to accomplish our objective, albeit virtually, we dedicated our time, very similar to structuring the board interviews. We had a full day, 8:00 AM to sundown, where we all independently met with different groups. So best practice for us is two to three weeks of community engagement. I think the bigger question is, what do you anticipate by way of the holidays? You know, do you, do you anticipate your community being active and involved prior to winter break? Or do you think we should continue the community outreach after the new year?
So relating to your question, before I get to your question specifically, I want to go back to something Patricia said regarding the community input. So I know you're going to interview folks and do some stakeholder meetings with groups as well. I'm curious, though, are you also going to hold, and I know it's a little trickier with, with everything being virtual, but open public forums where those folks who we may not know have an interest or may not know who they are, they can attend an open forum and give their feedback and their thoughts upon the search as well? I think that's, that would be an important part to allow other folks who we identify as a board because we may miss some people, just, you know, any, a parent of a district who wants to participate in their feedback, which I think could be valuable as well. So what does that process look like? Or how does that fit within the timeline that you all are looking at?
Absolutely. So another best practice in recent experience, we've conducted town, we refer to them as town hall meetings or community input meetings where it's more of a community of the whole, if you will. We've used different medium or media to accomplish that. We've done Facebook Live, YouTube, Zoom. Our Zoom credentials can only accommodate, you know, 200 people. I don't, you know, I don't know what type of community involvement you would anticipate, the numerical value, what that would be. But if you have, if your communications department has we can send invitation out to the community, again, using the messaging from the district website to invite folks to join us virtually. We facilitated meetings in English and Spanish. If we need translation in other languages, we would need to know what language preferences you request, and I'll have to work with your board council and the district staff to prepare for those accommodations. But to answer your question, Board President Lopez certainly want to do the community as a whole, town hall meetings.
And James, this is Wanda Page. In lieu of, and I don't, I believe you kept up what's going on. It may not be an in-person meeting. They may all have to be virtual in lieu of what's happening with the coronavirus, that if it is a town hall and you've given a number of different ways in which to connect with people, I don't think you can ask for any more than that. That if you don't get it this way, then if you really are concerned, then there's going to be a town hall meeting on this day, or you may just have a conference call, but you're trying to give them every option to connect.
That's right. Yeah, and that's the, exactly. So, you hit the nail on the head. So, it's making ourselves available to provide input for them to share their voice, whether it's through direct phone calls, even submitting an email with, you know, priorities. Sometimes folks will send us a Word document, for example, with the bullets of the characteristics and traits they're looking for. We'll create a repository of all of the feedback that we receive. Once we've done that, the four of us will collectively create and synthesize that information, but collectively create that synopsis, that summary report. So, it's a very robust process. It's very intensive in terms of the time on task of our team, but it's a critically important step. So, that way, your staff, your students, your constituents, all of those who are keenly interested in what we're up to, feel as if, because it is a genuine and authentic process for us. I mean, if any of our board partners said, hey, we don't need to do this, I would tell them, wait, hold on, you definitely need to include your staff. And I can sense from listening to all of you that you feel you agree with us. So, credit to you for wanting to be thorough and go through this process, because it is very important. But to Dr. Leonarda's point, it's a matter of timing. So, I think the biggest thing to consider is the holiday schedule. So, I think we can be nimble and flexible. I mean, we can set a timeframe in mind right now of what we'd like to accomplish, but by no means do we need to stay married to that. If we need to extend it beyond the New Year, you know, after the winter break, we can. And even after we have the leadership profile created and developed, we'll still be available to folks to talk to. So, I want everyone to know, those that are listening right now, that we're accessible. You know, this isn't a one-stop shop. You know, as I jokingly said during the interview, we won't love you and leave you. You know, we're here to help you. We want to understand what we're a representative of everybody.
Can I ask a quick question? How active is your school district on Facebook?
Very. Yeah. Yeah. On all social media platforms, we're Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. So, they're fairly active. And Mr. Birch can help, you know, with that. He and his team are doing an excellent job of getting information out via social media platforms. And then, we have a newsletter as well that we send out and some other mediums.
Wonderful. I think using those avenues, we can make sure that we get input from the entire community, making sure that everybody knows they can connect with us one way or another. And then, that's another way for us to always go back on and remind them to go and fill out the survey, go and fill out the survey, just to everybody. So, those are always great platforms nowadays.
Yeah. And if I can make a suggestion, just, you know, a tentative suggestion for thought, food for thought. Looking at our calendars, we could begin the community outreach and start scheduling town halls and working with the communications department and set aside, for us here in Texas and most places around the United States, we could focus on the week of December the 7th and the week of December 14th. Now, for us and most of our clients, they are going on winter break as after, or beginning December the 19th. I don't know if that holds true for Kansas City. I apologize. I haven't looked at your calendar just yet. But we could theoretically look at the week of the 7th and the 14th to conduct community-based meetings virtually. Does that sound reasonable? And if we don't reach folks, again, we can carry that over to the week of January the 4th.
That sounds acceptable to me. Yeah.
I think that's good.
Yeah. And I'm looking at, and so I'm looking at your initial timeline, your proposed timeline that you included in your application. I think that fits pretty well with what you all had proposed initially. But I like the idea of continuing, you know, even after the New Year, to continue gathering information and, you know, getting a report of where we're at once, you know, after a couple of weeks and saying, okay, have we had sufficient input? But even afterwards, continuing to gather information. I mean, that can always, you know, help out as well. And starting, you know, a little later in December, or not later, but it gives us time as well to think about, how do we structure those, you know, town halls? Or, you know, what types of questions do we want to ask, depending on? And I know it's dependent on the audience, the folks you're meeting with as well. But it allows some time to work through some of those details.
Absolutely. Yes. And the other thing I felt to mention, so with the weekly updates, the survey data that we're able to disaggregate, so as soon as that's launched, every Fri-
Every Friday, giving you enough.
Raw data respondents.
James, we're just teeming. Every time you go out, I just finish your sentence.
Okay. Thank you. She's heard me say this quite a bit. So, we're yin and yang. So, every Friday with the regular update, we'll provide the raw data. We'll disaggregate how many folks have responded, the categories of responses and so forth. So, we'll be able to export that so that you can see what folks are saying each and every week. And then, of course, when the final report comes out, that'll be more inclusive, all-encompassing, with all the other points of contention that folks want to share with us. So, those, I think that's a good plan. You know, we start with that week of the 7th through the 18th of December. We continue the outer week of January 4th. Of course, during the holiday season, I'm sure folks will have some downtime. And if they feel compelled to drop us a line and say, hey, we're here to visit, you know, for us, our offices, you know, will be touch and go during winter break. We kind of follow the same trend and suit of our district partners, you know, in the holiday seasons. But I take the time to keep up with administrative stuff and other things that are hard for us to do when I'm on the road or traveling. And last but not least, what I'll tell you is that I am committed to working in person if necessary. So, recognizing that there are COVID restrictions and that you're working virtually right now, if it is an absolute necessity, I have, I've traveled infrequently over the course of the last three months for some of our board partners. So, if you need me in person, if you could just give me at least a week's notice to plan for travel, I'm happy to do that.
This is Yolanda. Can I ask us to repeat those dates again? You cut out during that time, and I want to make sure I have.
Yes, ma'am. So, the board interviews, again, the one-on-one meetings, the 25th, the 30th of November, and then the first.
Okay.
And then, the stakeholder internal and external meetings, December 7th through the 18th, with an overflow week of January the 4th through the 8th. And I'll send all of this in writing as a follow-up or by early tomorrow morning, just so that everybody has, you know, the generic timeline that we're working from now. And again, we'll keep this very fluid. So, by no means does this need to be engraved in stone. It's just something for us to work from as a benchmark for now.
And last year, we had a roundtable of community events that Stephen Linco's held in our community, and they were very well-attended. I think it's important for us to reach out to those folks as well who took out time to actually meet with us and to know the state of our district and things of that nature. But Stephen Linco's also has a number of lists that I feel would be very valuable to us as we think about community people. Sure, I could send you a list of 50 or 60. But the reality is, I know that list is already out there. So, no need to duplicate efforts from the people who signed in on those lists and took out time to say they wanted to be involved. I think it's important for us to reach out to those folks and their phone numbers, email addresses, and things of that nature was also out there. Another thing I was thinking about is, you know, we do live in a digital age to where people can sign up, you know? So, I was wondering if it's possible to do survey lists or something where people could sign themselves up? As Randy may have mentioned, you know, there are some folks out there that we may miss. So, is there a way that, and of course, you said you're available, but is there a quick, like, link that we could possibly have people self-sign up so that they can be included, so that we won't overlook them? Or possibly, information has changed? Just, I think that would be a quick answer to, hey, I want to sign up. Great. Here's the form link. Go out there and fill it out so that we won't have to, ourselves as board members, keep a list of people who we may run into at the store or in our locations.
No, great point. And two of us, myself and Raymond, who you met during the last meeting, Mr. Allman, we utilize an application referred to as Calendly. So, we can update our Calendly credentials to offer group meetings rather than 30 minutes of one-on-one meetings with an individual. So, that way, we're maximizing time, because the thing that we need to be careful of is having too many high-volume one-on-one calls. We need to at least try to create small group meetings. So, what we can do is, I need to look at our credentials, and we can provide you with our Calendly links to share on the district's webpage. But I'll have to do some due diligence on my end to ensure that that application isn't just allowing for individual one-on-one meetings, because our days will get very, very busy, if, you know, less productive if we're doing too many one-on-one meetings. Does that sound reasonable? Because we do want to be mindful of the time constraints.
James, this is. And it does allow for multiple appointments or multiple people to sign up in the same one. You just have to make sure it sets it so that that time slot stays open to max out how many ever people you want to sign up at the designated time.
Right. Exactly. So, perfect. So, I'm glad you're familiar with it. So, that's what
That's what he'll be looking at and getting set up for you.
Great. Thanks.
When you get done, I have a comment.
This is Wanda Page. I have a question. Because in this age of technology, I know a lot of people have it, but there are a lot of people who don't have the technology. They can't afford it. So, how do you get in contact with that person? Do we consider them? I know everybody's saying, oh, everybody has Facebook, and everybody, a lot of people don't. So, how do we connect with them?
That was part of my comment. And then, if I can add on to what Ms. Page just said as well, we have a core group of people that have been involved, and then, we have this other group of people that are kind of on the outskirts. I can't tell you they don't want to be involved. I can't tell you they may not know how to be involved. I've heard a lot of feedback about that. And so, I want to make sure, and I appreciate our stakeholders that have been involved in the past, and I think that solid list is important. But I also want to make sure that we are being a little bit innovative in the way we reach the community and other people, to make sure we get more voices in that space.
Yeah. No, I think that's a fair comment. So, to address both of those comments, that's the greatest challenge with this process. Those folks that do not have access to Wi-Fi, internet connectivity, have the technological resources at their disposal, that's the trickier part. So, we'll defer to you on what the district's best practices have been in the face of COVID or reaching folks that don't have the technology. I mean, we have a number of suggestions that we can make, you know, using traditional pen and paper methods of distributing surveys, things of that nature. But if they have access to, you know, a cellular device or something else where they can schedule a call with us, that's really, if we're not able to meet in person, some of those other methodologies are really the best practice. But we're open-minded to other suggestions. We recognize that there is a lot of synergy across the country with these challenges, but every community is unique in its own regard. So, with regard to your community, tell us how we can do that, and we'll follow your lead.
So, I don't know if this is the right answer or not, but we hand out lunches. How do we communicate that? When people pick up their lunches, how do we add a memo in there that says, hey, by the way, that's just the thing that comes to the top of mind? How you do it, what happens, all those logistics? We have people with better minds, but just want to have that.
Remember that Zoom also has a dial-in phone number? So, the most common thing that we could do is put the Zoom phone number for dial-in. That includes the PIN number. That's an easy way. Also, you know, with those who pick up lunches, just like the survey that came out about reentry from school, it came in through our campus, and it was on there for us to sign off on, you know, and be a blast out. So, that was very effective to us. But that's the only thing I could recommend is the phone number. You know, many people don't realize that Zoom has a phone number and that you can simply call in, but it works, especially when technology has problems. You just dial in and keep the meeting going from college.
Drew had a comment, and then I've got a comment after.
And I was going to say, that's where Mr. Birch, Edwin Birch, and his staff will come on board and be able to be able to work through all of that and then give suggestions as to the direction as to how or where we should go.
Yeah. You took the words right out of my mouth, Mr. I think working with Mr. Birch, he'll be able to help out. I also think, you know, we could maybe even target, you know, we did distribute several hotspots to those families who were struggling with connectivity. And so, we could probably work with our IT team and the buildings to identify who were some of those families that are having some connectivity issues that maybe we could mail out, you know, be very selective and mail out paper copies of the survey that they could then return back to our community. And then, could also use our YouTube channel, our, you know, public channels as well, and maybe partner with some community agencies to get the information out to some of those harder-to-reach parts in our community. So, I think there are several avenues. All that to say, there are several avenues. I think we just have to be very proactive in making sure, I think Ms. Page is right, we don't want to miss, we want to allow anybody that wants to participate the opportunity to give their feedback, whether it's by Zoom or other means.
Yeah, absolutely. No, and again, credit to the board for, you know, thinking ahead and planning for this, because it's important to include everyone. So, we recognize that importance. Do you have a district communication alert system where parents can receive SMS alerts text? That's another opportunity for us to alert folks to what we're up to. So, I think there's, to your point, Mr. Lopez, we, there are a number of avenues we can pursue. So, once we connect with Mr. Birch, I'll set aside some time to discuss some of these communication protocol channels, and we can just map it out together.
One last real quick that I'll mention, and I know Edwin will mention this as well, but we do have a program, an initiative, Parents as Partners, that involves community members and parents and students. And I understand from Edwin that they're planning to do things between Thanksgiving and Christmas or for the holiday break. So, that's just another natural space where we can tap into as well. So.
Terrific. Yeah, I think we have the tools and the resources to accomplish our objective. You know, I can't say with 100% certainty we will reach every single person, but we will make our best attempt. You know, we'll put our best foot forward, so that way, you know, we're representing all of your constituents, your community, to the best of our abilities. So, it will never be from a lack of effort. I can promise you that. All right. So, I think that covers, unless, Pat, did I miss anything else in terms of immediate? All right. So I think that covers unless, uh, Pat, did I miss anything else in, in terms of immediate milestones?
You know, the only thing I was wondering, James, is, is, you know, we have the dates for the board interview. We have dates for two weeks before the holiday. And my question would be right before we leave for holiday, would the board like somewhat of an update as to what we're hearing? Or maybe we just do that in writing from the community input to follow up after January? Or what is the desire of the board?
I can always speak for myself. I think it would be good to have a touch base just to see how things are going and if we need to start communicating in other ways, like is the message getting out there? So I think it would be a good touch base.
So if we could do it, James, sometime that before the break, I, I don't know what schedules will allow, but you know, just a tentative meeting that would say, look, we may need to check in, just a quick check in to let you know how we're doing and what we're hearing and then we will get, you know, more after the holidays, but it's a good time to check in.
Sure, I agree. Thanks, Pat. Um, so yeah, so we can work around your schedules and forgive me, what, what day are you released for your winter break? It's the last day of school.
Well, we have a board meeting scheduled for the fifteenth of December.
Okay, well, if it's appropriate to add us to the agenda on that day, we can give a quick update then. So that way you already have a, a, a scheduled board meeting. We can give a, a quick overview. Answer any questions you might have and where we are.
Or we could do, do a special one on the seventeenth, just a quick one to give you a few more days to uh to assemble information.
Okay, the, the seventeenth, um, I would have to rely on, um, sorry, I'd have to volunteer Pat and Alton to lead that. Uh, we have another previously scheduled board meeting that's been on the books for three months.
Well, the fifteenth would, do you think you'd have enough sufficient time between now and, and the fifteenth to gather information and to, to pull stuff together to, to have meaningful feedback um, to us? Or do you, would you prefer to have a few extra days to pull together some, some of that information? I think that, to me, that's more critical, right? Is that enough time that, that you would have um, good enough information to share or, or do you need more time?
Or even, even the eighteenth for a quick meeting? Because I, I, I don't want to have a, a meeting that you don't have time to have meaningful information for us.
One of the things I think is as we do a quick check-in, the check-in is not to be expect on everything we're hearing, but it's more like, okay, here's where we are. This is how many meetings we've had. Here are the general topics that we've been hearing as to attributes. But we will continue our meetings in January. So here's just a quick check-in to let you know. You know, we've had all the board meeting, board, board interviews. We've had this many meetings. We have this many more meetings scheduled. And we will continue to hold these other meetings in January. So not, it's not going to be the complete in-depth of here's your leadership profile, but it's more of a quick check-in. So I think the fifteenth would be a good time just to let you know. And then you can say, hey, I'm hearing from the community A, B, C, D, and then we take it from there. So I think the fifteenth is really a good date to do it.
Okay.
Uh, that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, great.
And our meetings are at five o'clock, so it'll be, and it, it'll just fall within the agenda. I'll make sure to I'll work with uh, with Dr. Miguel and, and our, our board to make sure we get you all in an, an appropriate time on the agenda.
The other positive thing about that is since it is a board meeting, people will be hearing through your board meeting what you have done to date and what you plan. So it kind of tells your community, hey, we are involved and we're really excited about this. So I think that's a good time to do it.
Yeah, so we'll have, again, it's just in the spirit of ongoing communication, frequent updates. Um, but to Pat's point, it's not the full summary overview with the company, accompanying uh, leadership profile. This is just to provide high-level overview where we are at that point in time. So I think it's a good idea just to have a quick check-in. And we can continue to follow this same kind of format as we, as we advance through the search. Uh, we'll, we'll have regular check-ins. We, we serve the will of the board, so just know that we're going to continue to do these sorts of activities together with you. All right, terrific. Um, if it is the will of the board, would you like to advance to the survey questions? All right, so.
James, sorry, um, before, before we get there and, and sorry to hold this up, y'all. Um, just a question, I, I, I just wonder, the proposed timeline that you, that you all gave us, um, the overall timeline in your application. Do you still think, I mean, is, is that pretty realistic in terms of, you know, the flow and where we might be when we uh, look at the finalists? I mean, are you, are you all still working from that timeline or does that need to be adjusted at all? Um, I'm, I'm just curious for myself.
Yeah, great question. So it will be updated accordingly as we identify specific dates. So we'll work. We, we, we have a tendency to backwards map it, but if you give us a target and date, for example, as when you'd like to name a lone finalist, that's, you know, that's ge- generally how we operate and before um, our major milestones into the timeline to achieve that goal.
And we back.
But I would say for, for now, you know, yeah, so, so considering COVID and some, some of the um, potential incidentals, I think we just keep in, in our minds that we need to be graceful in this pursuit because there could be little things that come up. I'm not saying that we need to plan for the worst, but we just need to have certain expectations that um, some things could occur, but we should definitely have a timeline that we can work from. But I think that's why these meetings are important, these regular check-ins, so we can start checking things off the box and what our next major steps are. Uh, but to answer your question, yes, um, we're, we're still looking ahead and forecasting um, uh, uh, the same time with the same time goal in mind.
Thank you.
Yep, great question. Um, okay, um, so if we can, the survey question, so again, just to reiterate, these are not by any necessary to use. You, we typically don't develop the survey questions until we get a sense from you what you're looking for after that initial um, board member interview, set of interviews. But if you have a set of questions in mind that you'd like for us to ask, for us, I could tell you a best practice is to have between five and six questions. We want to keep it short, succinct. The, the time, you know, the time allotted for a person to respond, they can do it from their mobile device, their PC or laptop, a tablet. Um, we want it to be very intuitive and user-friendly. It is anonymous, so we'll protect the anonymity of the responders. And we need to have certain points in there that you can self-select it, for example, whether you're a parent, your staff, faculty, administration and so forth. So some of these questions are um, continuous for us because, you know, they're, they're necessary. Like question four is, is most likely a given. Number two, in terms of priorities, what you're looking for, I, I, I took a shot in the dark. The history of the district, but I could be off looking for your input on what you feel is important. And if you don't like any of these questions, we can start from scratch. So I'll open the floor to comments and dialogue.
Hi, this is Stacy. I would say I like these questions. I would ask if someone is, if they are interested in a local area versus national. Birch, I know that was a concern previously, if the community wants someone more local or national. So um, that can be worded in various different ways, you know, meaning regional or national or you know, just a preference in where the person is from.
Got it. Okay, um, does, uh, does there other board members, do you um, agree with that sentiment? I mean, that's easy for us to incorporate.
If you're going to ask the community, the uh, community in itself, I think it's a good question for them to be presented that.
I would agree.
Okay, so the consensus is yes. Okay, that's an easy um, thing to incorporate.
Disagree because then if we choose a dynamic person from outside the community and the results are skewed to say community, then um, it's almost a, a, a fight to begin with. An unnecessary fight that, but that's my objection. Because I think the person, if, if all these other uh, characteristics and qualities are consistent with what the uh, feedback is, it doesn't matter if, if it's a local or it's a um, national.
Yeah, and if, and if I could pose um, something in alignment with your, with your comment, we appreciate that. When we meet with the community groups, rather than having that particular question in the survey, we generally ask that um, during the community to get us what people are saying, but it's not necessarily captured um, in the survey data. So that way, you know, to your point, when we're disclosing what the community has shared, we're not hanging our hat on local versus regional and or national because it could technically create some whiplash, unnecessary whiplash for you. But I do respect the comment about incorporating it. So that's why we asked that question. What is your preference to have a, a local, regional or national um, candidate? You know, we ask that very broadly in a broad stroke to accomplish that goal.
It's also asked of the board members individually.
So I have another.
I think it would happen if we knew the community questions, how they may differ from the survey questions as well. Because if there's different questions that will be asked in the groups, um, I think it would be helpful for us to know that as well.
Yeah, and we can provide the, the, we typically use three, three questions, four questions at the most with the community groups because those meetings will last anywhere from forty minute, forty-five minutes to an hour or an hour and a half for the community town hall meetings. We always start with an opening statement. It's usually myself, you know, kind of setting the tone if we're in a town hall. I'll start by saying that thank you for your, for your time and sharing your input is valuable. And what we preface the conversation um, with is, is articulating that this is not an indictment on the state of the district or the past of the district. We're looking ahead to the future for your next leader. So this is not an opportunity to, to, to vent or to um, disparage the district. Because our goal and our intention is to identify the qualities, the characteristics. So we lead in with that. So first we start with celebrations. What, what are we most proud of? What can we brag and boast about when we're speaking to candidates about the Kansas City Kansas Public Schools? And then we listen, we ask clarifying questions. I, I bring a recorder with me if we're in person or if we're doing this virtually. We can record the Zooms if we're given the blessing of the community and they say, that's okay, record this. So that way we can have it archived and we can go back to it. So the celebrations are one. Flip side of the coin, or what are some of the challenges that the incoming superintendent needs to prioritize as he or she begins in, in, in his or her journey? And so we, we hear from them. And then last but not least, we'll end with characteristics, traits and attributes of the next leader and we capture those statements. And then we kind of leave it more open-ended without leaving it a free-for-all, but we, we ask if there's anything that uh, we, you know, something to the effect of, is there anything else that we didn't ask you this evening that perhaps you wanted to share with us? Um, and typically at that point, folks will ask us questions about the process and we'll, and you know, entertain questions. But again, we, we do a really great job of not letting us get off track or off target by indicting the district on things that occurred in the past or what they may be unhappy with now. We're really looking to identify that what, what's needed in the next leader and that's, that's our goal. So we're, we're uh, Alton is not on the call, but he's really masterful at that um, in the community facing meetings. I mean, he's got a, he's got a skill for it. Um, so um, and Pat's great too. We need to speak in Spanish. Pat is our, is our girl.
Uh, just to let you know, James, I mean, Alton actually is, he was texting me. He could hear us, but we couldn't see him or hear him. So, but he's been listening in all the time. He said he was going to try and go out, come back in and so forth. But just to follow up, it's usually when we talk about the characteristics, traits and attributes that we want, where we get into the discussion of their preferences in local, national, regional, those type of things. It comes in during that question. So it is.
And I just, I just promoted Alton to a panelist. I, when you said that, it prompted me to look on our attendees and there he was sitting there, so. I'm sorry, sorry about that, Alton.
You, Alton, I was bragging about how well you um, you manage the community town hall meetings that we conduct. And we, we talked about the celebrations, the challenges and really not letting it to be an opportunity for indicting uh, the district for, for past um,
Right.
whatever, whatever grievances they may have. So I, I told them that you're the, you're, you're the gentle soul when it comes to us um, working and engaging.
Very kind. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have a question. I wonder, and I don't know the answer, you, you all can help us figure it out. Is it helpful at all? Or maybe it's just, it comes up organically in conversations. Uh, but to ask or to try to gather, what are the expectations of community members or whoever you're speaking to? Uh, what do they expect out of our school district? It doesn't necessarily hit at the superintendent or that, that leader um, expectations. But, but it kind of does, right? If, if our community is expecting X, Y and Z and the, the, you know, finding somebody that aligns with, with that, I think it's helpful. So I, I don't know how you get to that or if that's even helpful at all um, when we're gathering information.
I, I will tell you, Mr. Lopez, that when we were doing a lot of our Zoom calls, one of the things that we always started with, and I, I have to again compliment Alton because what we started with is what are your aspirations for the district? What is it you would, and that was the, how we initially started it. What's your aspiration? What is it you'd like to see your district be? And then we go, okay, so now let's look at the celebrations that you have. You know, what are those challenges that may keep you from being what you aspire to? And then how can the new superintendent, what are those characteristics that the new superintendent has to have to help you get to be the desk, the district that you want to be?
I, I have a, I don't know if you bring this up about the experience of the superintendent. Do you talk about if you're looking at someone who's been doing it three or four or five years? Or someone who was the assistant? Does that come up somewhere in your questioning?
It, it does. It falls in line with the characteristics, traits and attributes. So it's kind of a, a sub-question to that, that particular question. So we might um, pose that, that byproduct of the same question like, okay, for example, are you looking for somebody who's an experienced educator, somebody who's been in the classroom, who's been a principal, a high-level administrator or even a sitting superintendent? And it starts to generate some of those thoughts and people start to raise their hands and they speak up and the, but yes, absolutely, that comes up.
And, and I think that once you see the questions that we actually ask the board members, you will see that a lot of the things that you're talking about right now, they are very specific questions in the interview one-on-one with the board. And then it gets perpetuated as we get to the group meetings with the community.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, so do you overall feel like, you know, these sample whole survey questions to accomplish like the preliminary objectives of what we're looking to ascertain from not only your staff or students, but the community? I mean, we, I, we can give you, you, you have more time. If you'd like to gather your thoughts and put some of, of your expertise in writing. Um, what I, I would ask is if um, if the board officers and your council can help us um, gather that feedback. If, if you don't have your thoughts necessarily right now, we can spend, you know, the next forty-eight hours, seventy-two hours putting that together. Um, but if you have thoughts right now you'd like to share, we can continue to word submit this together tonight.
Well, I have a question. You, you've done this before. And I've learned when you're surveying people, you don't want to have too many questions. Because we live in an age in a society, even though everybody wants all this, they don't want to take the time to fill the paper out. I mean, all that sounds great, but if you can keep it simple and sweet, you get a better response. The more you ask them to write, and this is something that they all claim they're so concerned about, they tend to not want to do that. And you didn't give a lot of multiple choice stuff. Some things you're saying, you got to write it out. And I, to me, this is a spot, but I know there are others who may want more. But you got to remember, we're in an age where in our society, people don't want to write, even though we say it's so critical. Education is so important, but when you ask them to utilize some of their tools that they've learned, then it becomes a different thing.
I'm satisfied with it.
Yeah, so the the length of time, the average length of time for this survey, according to the analytics of of the subscription that we use, it's anywhere from four to six minutes to complete. So but by design, it is very succinct. Um, so that way, to your point, Ms. Page, is that we can, we can disaggregate the data. Folks can do it from their mobile devices or tablets, you know, and it's it doesn't take a long time because, you know, a- as much as we are going to inform people the survey is available, I can tell you that we may, you know, anywhere from, depending on the involvement of the community. During COVID, we've seen fewer responses. I think folks are just overwhelmed with the amount of technology and experiencing fatigue. So with the surveys in the last year during the pandemic especially, we've seen a slight downtick in responses. Um, and I and I attribute that, and then this is just my opinion. Pat and Alton may disagree, but I attribute it just to the overwhelming um need for technology. People, you know, I think are are feeling overwhelmed by just all of the different communications coming through technology medium uh or media.
You know, we talk about, we talk about COVID fatigue. I think people also have technology fatigue. You know, they they just get a little tired. They're on it all the time. I mean, you know, it's amazing that the word Zoom um became, you know, a verb. I'm zoomed out, you know, I'm, it's an adjective, it's a verb, it's a noun, it's you name it what it is. It's it becomes everything because everybody seems to be on Zoom. So I think it's a little bit of fatigue also.
Yeah, and I I think that we can, you know, realistically expect um anywhere from a hundred and fifty to maybe five hundred survey responses, depending on how long we keep the survey up, of course. I mean, we can have it up indefinitely throughout the search and uh, you know, we we could have more surveys than that. But I think that's a fair expectation. The community engagement meetings that we'll have virtually and telephonically, that's where the rubber meets the road. We'll have more feedback from those meetings than we will from the survey.
It works for me.
Good. So uh when we when we connect with Mr. Birch, you know, we can, we can create the actual template for the survey uh online. We'll transfer these questions to our our official survey. We'll provide him with the unique URL in English and Spanish, and then what other languages you decide are appropriate. We'll have to, we'll have to work those in um as well. But for now, we'll start with those two two languages, English and Spanish and uh.
Perfect. I think that's great. Thank you. Yeah, and he'll he'll, Edwin will be able to help you out. He's he's great with all of that and understands some uh what we need to do. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay, terrific. All right, folks. Well, that's um, and like, you know, I don't want to be uh, you know, a remiss of my team. Is there anything else that um you wanted to cover? I I know we've been um on the phone with you. I don't want to take too much of your your evening up. But is there anything else that we can do to answer your questions, any other concerns about where we are in the process? All right, good. Well, we appreciate your time. Um, I will follow up as I promised with um our our items that we discussed this evening. I'll put everything in writing. I'll share it with the board officers and your council, and that can be distributed to the entire board. You have our contact information now that we shared um last week, I believe. So you have our personal cell phones, our email addresses. Um, so feel free, if at any point you need to reach us, um, don't hesitate. You know, again, we we work at the will of the board. So thanks, um, Pat and Alton for being here. Thank you again for the vote of confidence. We're excited to be working with you. It's got a bright future ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much, James and team. Any other final um thoughts from board members? I want to make sure everyone feels comfortable. Great first meeting, James. Um, we're we're excited. I know when Ms. Page and I met with you all last week, we were super excited about about the process. So um, any final questions or thoughts from board members? Okay, well, if not, thank you so much, James and team. Alton, sorry to keep you on the other side for so long. We'll make sure that doesn't happen next time.
I was with you guys from question one, actually. So for a long time. Uh, everything sounds great and we'll get the questions to you guys in advance. And uh, I think I guess like just list the typical types of groups. We can just, that's the prototypical type of group. But then we'll try to get with Mr. Birch for that as well. So so I I was paying attention.
Well, with that, board, we don't have another meeting until uh December first. Um, so I just want to wish all of you a very happy and blessed and safe uh Thanksgiving. Uh, please be safe. Everybody watching, please be safe. Um, we want to keep our kids and community healthy so we can get back into our school sooner than later. So um, but a a happy and blessed holiday season to everybody. Um, and again, just recognizing American Education Week, thank you to all of our teachers and staff for all the great work you continue to do in our district. Uh, we're so proud of you, um, every single one of you. Um, so thank you for all that you do. Um, with that, this meeting is adjourned. See you all soon.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.